Good morning. I would like to ask everybody to stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
The pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Douglas County Board meeting. For the record, there's open of the Public Meetings Act here on the north wall. There is in the back of the room an automatic defibrillator needed if anybody needs that for any health reasons also. I'll ask everybody to please silence or mute or turn your cell phones off. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Well, roll call.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 2nd. Item B, call a meeting and set Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, is a date for hearing on certified assessments, corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
For the viewers at home, the votes will not be displayed on the screen afterwards, but I will announce as usual. Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions. Routine resolutions, resolutions D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K. What's the will of the board? Is the motion to approve and adjourn by Commissioner Kraft? The second by Commissioner Duda? Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item 1 is menacing claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018. Item B is approval of the claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. What's the will of the board? Motion, motion to approve by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item 2 is the consent agenda. There's eight items. What's the will of the board? It's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item 3 is reclamations and proclamations. Letter A is a resolution recognized in October 2018 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Let me know for the record, there is a substitute resolution there. The clerk has that. It's been passed out to the board. I'll read it here. It says as follows. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based neurological learning disability characterized by difficulty with accuracy and/or fluent word recognition, writing, and by poor spelling and decoding abilities, and whereas these difficulties typically are caused by a deficit in the phonological component of language that is suspected in relation to other cognitive abilities and to the provision of effective classroom instruction. And whereas dyslexia is highly prevalent affecting up to 15% to 20% of the population occurring on a continuum of severity and is persistent and lifelong. And whereas dyslexia creates unique challenges for students resulting in significant educational implications which need to be addressed including the influx from school-to-prison pipeline where the Bureau of Justice Statistics Special Report on the Educational and Correctional Populations by Caroline Wolf Harlow, Ph.D., states that the percentage of state prison inmates who have not completed high school or obtained their GED includes 66% of inmates with a learning disability. And whereas dyslexia is the most common learning disability and the major cause of reading difficulties. And whereas children and youth who are identified early and provided with structured literacy-based reading instruction will have fewer difficulties learning to read than those who do not receive assistance until later elementary school or once they have been assessed with the juvenile, assessed with the juvenile justice system. And whereas we encourage community organizations such as the Voice Advocacy Center and Decoding Dyslexia in Nebraska to share their knowledge and experience to increase awareness of dyslexia and help individuals impacted by the learning disability to attain their full potential or reentry back into their communities. And whereas learning to read efficiently will benefit from increased awareness of the nature of dyslexia, the early warning signs of dyslexia, and the value of proving evidence-based multisensory structured language interventions for students with dyslexia. And whereas greater recognition, support, and understanding are necessary to ensure individuals with dyslexia are accurately identified and provided with appropriate services so that they can lead maximally productive lives. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby declare the month of October 2018 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. We do have a representative here that would like to say something. Ms. Jackson, you want to come up? No, no mic. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Clarice Jackson, and I represent Voice Advocacy Center as the executive director and the founder of Decoding Dyslexia in Nebraska. And I just want to thank the commissioners for recognizing October as Dyslexia Awareness Month, and I would like to work with you all in the future regarding this important issue. Legislation LB 1052 was passed last legislative session which acknowledges dyslexia in our school systems, but there's still much work to be done, and that includes the kids that are pushed from school to the juvenile justice system which you guys have some control over. So I would be happy to work with you all on trying to address those who are impacted in that way. Thank you so much for recognizing this. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. There's a motion to second. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle has joined us. Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item B is the recognition of the following employee who is retired, Ms. Deborah Lillard, who's retiring after 20 years at the Douglas County Health Center. It's Ms. Lillard here. Being that she's not, we'd like to wish her well in her retirement and thank her for her years of service. Is there a motion from the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item 4, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items not listed on the county board's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We'll go to item 6, which is public hearing. Letter A, a zoning regulation text change by the Douglas County Environmental Services. A text change requesting amending Tale 4.1 permitted use by zoning district, page 4-6B, add "commercial recreation," in quotes, controlled impact as a special use in the AG district. Doug Cook, we will now open the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's Doug Morris, your Douglas County Planner. As the chairman mentioned, this is a zoning regulation text change. So what, and this is a staff-initiated request. So you'll see here on the board that the use called "commercial recreation high impact" has an S next to it, which... Pardon? Oh, is it not on the... Yes, it is hard to see. So "commercial recreation high impact" is a special use permit. And "commercial recreation high impact" would be used as such as a shooting range, a driving range, go-kart tracks, and that is also what the drive-in was processed through, which you approved about a year ago. But you'll see that just above it here, there's a term called "commercial recreation controlled impact." Now, they're similar except different in that commercial recreation controlled impact would mostly be inside buildings versus high impact were, are generally outside. So staff thought, well, hmm, if high impact is a special use, well, controlled impact should either be a special or a permitted use. Because we have so much agricultural zone ground in the county, staff recommendation is to put an S in this box right here, which means special use. So that is the purpose of the request. We are not issuing a special use permit to any specific site today, but we are allowing an individual site to apply for a special use for a use of controlled impact. The planning commission recommended approval on unanimous 8 to 0 vote, and as you concur with that recommendation.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, does this restrict or anyway prevent a landowner from using their property? When I read this, I wasn't sure. I mean, is it, obviously it's some kind of a, it's a change, and I just want to know who does this, you know, who does this impact? And does this cause difficulty for anybody? Or is this something good for people? Or why don't you just tell us that?
Commissioner Boyle, it's actually good for people because this blank right here means that a person...
We can't see that. We can't see it, and the form wasn't completed in the stuff I received. So I don't have a clue what you're talking about.
Okay, but right now, the use of commercial recreation controlled impact would not be allowed anywhere.
Okay, so is that go-karts?
That would be high impact, and that would require a special use.
Here's what I'm trying to get at. Is there some land that could suddenly, suddenly be turned into a go-kart racetrack next to a house? That's what I'm driving at. Is that, is there something in here that we're going to be surprised by? And if I'm not here in three years, which I won't be?
No, we, a go-kart, the example you gave, if the property where the go-kart track wants to go is agriculturally zoned?
Yeah.
It would need a special use permit.
Okay, and it doesn't now?
It does now.
Okay, so what's the difference then?
Because we're, the, the go-kart track is a high-impact use.
Okay.
We're proposing to change the controlled-impact use, which are more inside buildings.
Okay, do you want, okay, is it, is it more restrictive then?
No, this actually makes it less restrictive.
Well, that doesn't sound good to me. It doesn't sound good to me if a go-kart tracking is less restrictive.
Okay, but the controlled-impact use we're talking about today, it has nothing to do with a go-kart track because the go-kart track is already covered under high impact.
Okay.
And that already requires a special use.
Would it make, would it cause you a heartburn if we laid this over till the next meeting? Because I really, I read and read this, and there's nothing, I don't have that information, not that that would help, but I really like to have this discussed before we, fully before we vote. Because I don't have enough information to vote intelligently. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
I'd make a motion we lay it over to the next meeting.
Well, we'll just keep the public hearing.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. Thanks. I'm sorry, Doug.
Commissioner Kraft.
To, to, in concern, okay, I'd like to know, was this brought forward by a question from a constituent or a landowner?
Indirectly, it's, it was, but it was initiated by staff. Because we view this as something that probably should have been done but isn't done, so we look at it as a cleanup item.
So right now, if I had a shed I wanted to convert to a roller rink, I could not do it, correct?
You could not do it.
After this ordinance changes, I couldn't convert that shed to a roller rink with special use permit?
100% correct.
Okay. Does that make sense, Commissioner Boyle?
Not really. I'd like to lay it over.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm done.
Commissioner Duda.
I, if you don't have a second, I'll second the motion to lay over. What I would ask, Doug, can, we don't meet next week. Two weeks from today, can you come into our office at 8:30 and be available to answer, have some conversation about this item before it comes back up?
Absolutely.
Would appreciate it.
We don't need to motion. I just, we'll just keep the public hearing open and pick up here in two weeks from the open deal.
But leave the hearing open if you would. So sorry. Thank you.
There was a motion by Commissioner Boyle to lay over, second by, I mean, to lay over Commissioner, and second by Commissioner Duda.
Can we take action while the public hearing is open? Even if we're laying it over?
I'm assuming we can, since you didn't say anything.
Oh, sorry, my, there, my, okay, thank you. Trece York County Attorney's Office. That's a very good question, Mr. Ash. The, we're not taking action on the substance merely of when it's heard, a procedural matter, so I think they can take action to lay it over, but they should leave the open, the hearing, the public hearing open so that if there is needed for their discussion later, they can go ahead and do that.
Okay. There's a motion to second. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item B, rezoning request application for Lake Ario Investments LLC, Bernice E. Grucock. Doug, you want to go explain this?
Sure.
And officially, we'll open the public meeting on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are way, so where are we? Lake Arrow is way out west. Hopefully you can see the blue circle here on the map. This is Lake Arrow. Just to orient you, this is Blondo Street going east to west, the village of Waterloo up here. You're probably all familiar with West Shores, and that's this subdivision down here. This dotted line coming through here, everything to the right of that is Omaha jurisdiction. This dotted line up here, everything to the north of that is Valley jurisdiction. But you'll see this property here, Lake Arrow, is in Douglas County's jurisdiction. So this request is for a change of zoning, and it's a little bit different. Normally, when we do a change of zoning, we're going from agricultural to residential. Well, this time, we're going from residential to agricultural. So just a little bit different. So all this property you see here, kind of this fish hook looking thing, is owned by the applicant. His house is right here. He recently combined all of these lots, lots 19 through 37, into one big lot. That put him over 20 acres, which then he is now requesting he be rezoned from residential to agricultural. Our minimum lot sizing agricultural is 20. So that is the request. Here's a copy of the zoning map. You can see there is quite a bit of agricultural all around here. Again, this is the property. This is a picture of the comp plan map, and it shows this area as resource extraction. Resource extraction or mining operation. Sand and gravel. Yes, sir. So here's some pictures of the site. The property is straight ahead and to your left. Looking left again, you can see the lake, the lake, and for those of you who've been around for a while, there used to be an airstrip out there. So I went all the way on the south side, turned around and looked north, and so we're looking north on the old runway. The planning commission recommended approval of this change of zoning from residential to agricultural on a unanimous 8 to 0 vote, and asks that you concur with that recommendation.
Commissioner Boyle.
Okay, so this one's got me... What, what does, what's the plan to use? He's going to put crops on that?
It was explained to us by his attorney. He has no intention of developing it. He doesn't want it, he doesn't want those individual lots. He just wants one big 21-acre parcel, and he wants its own ag.
And he owns, he owns it all?
He owns all of the property.
Okay, and so what he's trying to do is apparently stop, stop development along this lake?
For him and his heirs, pretty much.
Well, do you think that's the highest and best use? Personally, I don't think it is. I, I'm sorry to do this to you, but we have to look at this a little closer because this can have some really significant negative impacts on that area. You know, that's a, there's not much water, although there's some dams that probably, I hope, never break, but they have all over the country. We have those in Douglas County, but this is a lake that frankly, we, we have so few. I'm really thinking that we ought to be very careful about how we designate. I can understand if you own it, you want to keep it. I have a cousin who owns a sandpit, and they, she has her home on it, and that's it. So I understand it out by LaShara, but I don't know. I'm a little bit uneasy about this in the metropolitan area.
I think part of it, Commissioner Boyle, might have something to do with taxes.
Yeah. Well, we can talk to the assessor sometime, I suppose. I don't know. I'm really, this is really a little bit, where does the, where does the owner live?
He lives in this house right here.
And, so I mean...
And he, he then owns all these other lots.
Okay. And what about, what about the lake itself? Does he, he must own the lake?
I, I do not know who owns the lake.
Okay, well, whoever owns the lake sure has an interest in the sandy beaches that adjoining it or the property that adjoins it. I just, this doesn't smell right, and I'm really concerned about it. Maybe I'll end up voting for it, but I don't have, I, right now, today, I'd vote no because it is not, in my book, the highest and best use of that property to lock it out of development forever. I mean, it sounds to me...
Well, okay, let me back up. I probably misspoke on your answer.
I guess it's not forever, but...
It's not like it couldn't be forever, but...
Yeah.
This could be subdivided at some point in the future, but the lots would have to be larger if they're on a private well and a septic, and additionally, the road would have to be improved. So it's not like it couldn't be developed. It could be developed in the future under our current or under the regulations in effect at that time.
Well, I'd like to hear from the landowner and his or her attorney. I'd like to have them here and tell us, what is, what's, what's all this, what does all this mean? Because to me, this is a really valuable asset to the people of the community. When you have a lake like that, it was probably developed by a sand and gravel operation, created a sand pit, and now it's a lake, and I, you know, I'm very uneasy with locking this in because that's really some, it's not a good use of that land adjacent to the water. I mean, that's, that's just not the highest and best use. I mean, and making it ag, that seems like a subterfuge to me. I mean, what's that all about? You're going to try to, you're going to put alfalfa on it next to the water? I mean, come on.
Well, I, I don't mean to speak for the applicant's attorney. But from the minutes, his attorney's name is Tom Ackley.
Okay.
And what I have here in the minutes is attorney Tom Ackley representing the applicant stated his client intends to keep the property in open space, natural, and has no desire for future development.
Okay. And he owns it now, obviously?
Yes, Mr. Grucock.
What other property does he own, the rest going around the other side of the lake? What's that like?
I, I don't know who those other owners are for sure.
And they're, the owners are aware of this?
They were all notified. There were close to 200, some people notified, there were, excuse me, there were 120 neighbors who were notified.
Okay, and anybody testify or appear?
No.
Okay. Well, I, even, even though no one testified and appeared, and I'm not sure why that happened, I'm not sure what that property is like. Maybe, you know, maybe I'll have to drive out there, I'll stop and get gas on the way out a couple of times. Anyway, we'll, no, I'm kidding. We'll, I'd like to see what that's all about because if the, you know, if that's sand coming around there and it's a nice lakefront property stuff, site, it is, it's not the highest and best use, and we really need to be thinking about that. And then the other sides, I don't know if that's mud and dirt or whatever it is, but I, I'm going to, if we vote today, I'll have to vote no, and I wish the applicant was here, and I wish the attorney was here. You've done a good job presenting it, but I think they need to be here to tell us, what in the world are you doing? Is this really the highest and best use? And I don't think it is, so, sorry. But that's where I am. I'd like to lay this over as well, just because I think it's so unusual.
Okay. I'll entertain that motion after Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Duda.
Yeah, my, my first question was going to be, what is the downside to this other than taxes? And Commissioner, excuse me, Boyle brought up a number of the downsides. And if there is a lake owner or homeowners association, would this give this gentleman, well, he already owns a lot, so it wouldn't give him an advantage for voting other than that which he already has? But could he mine it if he decides at a later date to, to extract sand and things?
That would need, that would need a special use permit.
Okay. And, yeah, because, because it bothers me also. So I would like also to lay it over.
Commissioner Duda.
A couple of questions. One is, the applicant is Bernice Grucock, and we keep referring to him. Is this Bernice Grucock that is doing this or somebody else?
Oh, I, I have always dealt with her husband, so that's my mistake.
Okay, so, so this is really Bill Grucock that's doing this under Bernice's name. My, I'm sorry that Mr. Goodwill, he left. We're done with the assessor's part of the meeting, and so he didn't need to hang around, but I have a question on, if we change this to ag, do they then qualify for ag valuation with the assessor's office even though there isn't a lick of agriculture going on? I, I don't want to be a part of that. To me, that's nothing but a tax-saving scheme, and, and, you know, Green Belt serves a purpose. It protects farmers. This isn't a farmer.
There is a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft, to lay it over to the October 23rd meeting. See no more discussion?
Because if everybody's here, I suppose that would be just, well, I don't want this to be discussed in a private meeting, so we can do the first thing in a private meeting, but then have this on the agenda to discuss as we have today?
Public hearing still open.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Please vote.
Well, you didn't get much done today, Doug.
Wow.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item 7 is committee discussion and action.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Letter A is finance. Item 1 is the budget report. Commissioners Morgan and Boyle.
As presented.
Okay. We'll go to item G, which is the Human Resource Committee. Item 1 is the weekly personnel report from civil service as submitted. There's nothing under legislative items, but Commissioner Duda has asked for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And, and I will be brief. I have two things that I would like to bring to the board's attention. One is that we lost a good friend here a couple of days ago with Betty Davis, former director of the Douglas County Historical Society. She was a good friend. She was, she really, I've known the historical society for a long time. They've had a lot of great directors, but I really feel like Betty put them on the map. She took them up to the next level. She was just so energetic and full of ideas and just what a wonderful woman. So I just want to point out that we did lose a good friend here a couple of days. Her service is going to be Thursday over in Council Plus. It's in today's newspaper. The other announcement that I would like to make is the Fall Feast out of the Douglas County Health Center will be Thursday, this Thursday, from 4 to 7. We will be serving Staley's roasted chicken. There is dine-in, carry-out, curbside service. We'll, we'll do whatever it takes to get you some Staley's chicken. So I would encourage people to participate and support the, the health center through, through that. That's this Thursday, day after tomorrow from 4 to 7, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a need for executive session for litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Litigation. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
And again, we're going into executive session for litigation. And again, we're going into executive session for litigation.
Okay, motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.
Yes.